Call the January 26, 2021 council study session to order. Before we move on to tonight's agenda, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. On March 6, the mayor issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. The proclamation has been extended until termination of the state emergency or until repealed by the governor or legislature. Due to these proclamations, tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone, listen live to the meeting, or to make comments. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can choose to make comments after the staff presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's one agenda item. If there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up, please press star three on your phone now or under the later comment periods, and we will call on you using the last two digits of your phone number. And I will also be sharing a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance, and please say here when I call your name. Councilmember D. Michelle?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
You, and Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz has a excused absence this evening. And at this time, I would, at this time, Mayor Polly would like to take a moment to address the council and the community, so I will hand it over to Mayor Polly.
Thank you very much, Council President Hunt. I just wanted to make sure with the city clerk that you're able to hear me because I wasn't, I'm technologically great. Thank you. Head nods all around. I just want to take a moment and share some sad news that we received this weekend about one of our employees. Shirley Fritz, who has been, okay, I think we need to mute. If you're not on mute, could you go on mute right now? Thanks. Shirley Fritz, who is one of our Public Works Operations staff, passed away this weekend and wanted to make sure that the council and the community knew about the impact that it was having. Shirley's left behind a family, and her husband Milt, and a young teenage son who is still living with them, as well as other children. It was quite shocking, very devastating for the family, and Public Works is one of our largest employee groups, so if you've been over there at that complex, you know, there can be sixty, seventy or more people in the building at a time, and Shirley was the center of it all. If you walked in, that was the first face you saw, and you always got a smile. So it's been quite dramatic. It's been very tough on the family, and it's been very tough on the team this week. And I just wanted to say that publicly and see if we could just all take a moment of silence and think about Shirley and, you know, the beautiful gift she brought to us as an employee, as a team member, and really think about her family and how hard it is for them this week. So if we could just take a moment together, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you. Council President Hunt, thank you for letting me address the council and the community this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Okay, with that, we will now proceed with the first item on the agenda, and that will be public comments. City Clerk, have you, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak on this item?
Yes.
Okay. So I will briefly go through some guidelines for public comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them very seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please do direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, be clearly, and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and please re-mute your microphone when done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to re-join the meeting if able, and personal attacks, obscene language, et cetera, will not be permitted. Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, the first person signed up is Kathy McCory. Kathy, I'll request that you unmute now. You'll need to press star six on your phone, and then you may also need to unmute your own phone if you've muted that as well. Also, please let us know if you'd like to make your comments now, or if you'd prefer to wait until after the staff presentation on tonight's agenda item.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll go ahead and make comments now, if you don't mind. I'm not sure if I can stay on for the entire presentation this evening. This is Kathy McCory with the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, and I'd first like to start off by thanking the city council, the mayor, and its city administrator, and the city staff for all of your hard work and dedication, especially during this past year. We have been put to the test with learning to pivot and come up with new ways of conducting business, and the city has done an incredible job of doing just that. So as I look over this evening's study session and some of the items you'll be going over, I'd like to comment on a few of those, and I beg your indulgence, I have taken them a little bit out of order. First one is in regards to a potential round of future small business grants. Yes, 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 and please, please, please. This is a long divergence from business as normal. We are not yet in recovery. Businesses are still going to need all of the support they can get, and we hope that those grant opportunities continue to arise. We would like to offer a few suggestions for your consideration that should a grant, another round of city grants become available, that we look at a new way of reviewing those grants to ensure that everyone is treated a bit more fairly, in the sense that perhaps grant gaps could, or could be adjusted based on overhead, or not gaps, excuse me, grant caps could be adjusted based on overhead, i.e., home-based with very little overhead versus brick and mortar, businesses with employees versus sole proprietorships, et cetera. There might be different levels of maximum funding that different types of businesses could apply for, and that might even stretch those dollars out a little bit further to keep more businesses afloat. Also, just tracking receipts of other grants and realizing that there's a, it takes a lot that we're asking to put this extra work into reviewing grants. We know how much time it takes and know that the chamber and even perhaps the EVC are available to help. Economic Development Department might want to look to putting together a committee, but we want you to know that when we make such requests of you, we realize that there are limited resources to getting this done, and we are here to help and support in any way we can to make these requests happen. Regarding the fit and fun, and I love that, we want to let you know that the chamber is about to launch a new app that was designed by a local company, Castis. I've spoken with the owner, Nathan Bossler, and he has said that the app could include recordings to complement trails by sharing points of interest, little fact toys, et cetera, could be a simple link. We are happy to lend our app to those efforts until such time the city feels that it has the funding to create their own app. Also, Searching for Salmon was an outdoor event last year that was very well received by the community, and we're happy to bring that back in an extended or even multi-seasonal way for the business community. LTAC issued a grant to the geocaching organization that brought the International Geocaching Event to us last summer. They're coming back again this summer, and they do have funding from the city already. So I think that that's a great thing being looked at. The geocaching group already has boxes set up all over the city. They promote our city year-round, and perhaps there's just a partnership there that we can make that information more available for residents to get out and about and enjoy that activity. Also, in speaking to the Arts Commission regarding their upcoming round of grants, I inquired about the Art Trail Map. It was one of our favorites at the Visitor Information Center. We've been out of it for quite a while, and we were happy to hear that they're looking into updating that map for the community, and again, want to offer our help and support in anything we can do to get that map back. The art map was just a great, fun, easy walk within the city itself, really showcased a lot of our art projects, as well as it has the ability to showcase a lot of other attributes of the city. When we had the fit and fun discussion, it did spur deeper conversation around recovery and best practices, and the chamber asked that perhaps special consideration be given to hiring local businesses. Issaquah Loyal has true deep meaning and not just marketing. I think it's something we can all look to practice. If we look for local businesses to contract with, even perhaps local nonprofits to partner with at making not just fit and fun happen, but any of these other activities. After all, rising tides float all boats. When the city hires local, you provide economic stability, create jobs, and lessen our need for grants. So we just ask that maybe as these programs and others move forward, that the city does give special consideration to hiring local. And I'll just put a pitch in, I happen to know that there's a local playground and outdoor exercise equipment company.
Kathy, this is Tisha. You've reached, you've reached the five-minute comment time. Please summarize.
Thank you. Now, I was going to comment on two other areas, so I thank you for your time, and I will just submit something in an email format. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Tisha, is there anyone else who's indicated a desire to speak on this item?
No one else has signed up in advance, but I do see a few phoning callers. So if anyone else on the line would like to make comments tonight, please press star three on your phone. That's star three. All right, and I see we have a phoning caller with the prefix 703 and the last two digits 80 wishing to speak. So I'm going to request that you unmute now. You'll need to press star six on your phone, and if you've muted your own phone, you will also need to unmute it.
Hello, this is Sharon Fries from Art by Fire.
We can hear you, Sharon. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to call in and voice my support for continuing the streetery. I read the staff report, and it is very accurate, but one point that was not mentioned in that report, while my business has done slightly less than it had done in 2019 while the streetery was running, one important thing to note is that half of my business was provided, fifty percent of our revenue, has been shut down since last March. We ended the year drawing sixty-nine percent of our normal business, and I attribute a lot of that success to the extra traffic that we receive from the streetery. And before I start off, I'm going to keep it really short, I just wanted to put a huge thank you in to the city for the grant that they gave Art by Fire. It has gone a long way in helping us hang in there, and we plan to be around for many more years to come. So thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's hard work. I know there's a ton extra on everyone's plate right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Tisha, has anybody else indicated a desire to speak?
No.
Okay. Thank you. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And I will also summarize at this point the email comments that we've received. We have received three emails from members of the community specifically on our agenda topics this evening, and I am summarizing emails while we're having virtual meetings as another way to, to get communication to council and to the community about what we're hearing. So we received three emails. All three were in support of the funding for the small business grants at the amounts that's recommended in our agenda bill this evening, and then one of those, in one of those emails, the individual also expressed support for the other items that are recommended to be funded this evening. And that is the summary of emails that we received specifically on the agenda items for this evening. So with that, I will move to our first agenda item, which is ID 0801, COVID-19 Pandemic Response and Recovery Task Force update, and this will be presented by City Administrator Wally Bogwitz.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the council, good evening. We have a lot to go through tonight. We have a PowerPoint presentation to share with you, but I want to make some initial comments of really the importance of this. The community has been through a lot, as you've heard from some of the public speakers this evening. I think the city has done a lot to be helpful. We've used our resources. We've used resources passed through by the state of Washington from the federal government, but we're at a point, once again, where I think we need to do more, and in conversations with Mayor Polly, she certainly agrees, and is at her instigation that we're here tonight to kind of share sort of a state of things, as well as some suggestions of moving forward. We've got a variety of staff members, community partners here with us this evening to talk about these issues. So let me go ahead and share my slides. And Tisha, I trust you can see all this?
Yes, looks good, Wally.
Great, thank you. So we'll start by talking about the challenges that the administration sees really for the next ninety days. What we're sharing with you tonight is not meant to be something for the balance of the year, but really just to take us through the balance of the winter into spring. I want to talk a little bit about the work of Mayor Polly's Recovery Task Force and the work that they've been doing, and the work that they did leading up to the beginning of January with a series of recommendations. Two main areas that we have been focused on through the pandemic has been human services and economic development, so we want to tonight provide some updates to you in both of those areas, not only things that are happening now, a review of some of the things that we did last year, but also thoughts moving forward. And then finally, we'll talk a little bit about recommendations for additional funding. As you'll hear through this presentation, we are estimating dollar amounts, we're estimating funding sources, things really still remain quite up in the air, and we recognize that and thought that this evening was an excellent opportunity to come to the council and get your feedback before coming back at a council meeting for action on some of these items. So our request of the council tonight is threefold. First, to receive the updates. Second, to review recommendations for additional funding and give feedback, and then provide any other feedback you may have regarding additional programs and services in addition to what we're going to be talking about this evening. So the challenges really fall into five key areas. First, vaccinations, and we'll talk quite a bit tonight about our sense here in Issaquah, the state of things with vaccinations, really the needs for shelter and business assistance. We will talk in specific terms about that. One of the big things we heard from the mayor's Recovery Task Force was the importance of community recreation and health, promoting good health, and so there is some recommendations along with that. And then, again, we'll talk a little bit about what additional financial support there may be for some of these initiatives. So as all of you know, during the latter part of December, two vaccines were approved by the FDA to move forward to vaccinate the population against COVID-19. While the process has been ramping up quickly, there are many moving parts. Alas, as I think many people are aware, the sheer numbers of vaccine doses that are available really are nowhere near the numbers of individuals that are currently eligible to receive the vaccine. And at this point, those eligible are first responders, and that group has largely been vaccinated. The next group, then, is those individuals sixty-five and older, those seniors living in congregate housing situations, and those seniors that are living with multi-generational family members. And so there have been many community vaccination centers located throughout the country, certainly throughout King County, but the ability to access the vaccines was difficult because the sheer numbers available really don't meet the demand. Mayor Polly, a couple weeks ago, seeing, I think, some of the challenges that we're here, called together in Issaquah Community Vaccination Partnership. This partnership consists of the city of Issaquah, the Issaquah School District, the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, our friends at Eastside Fire and Rescue, Costco, and Swedish Hospital, and we've been meeting over the last few weeks to kind of get a sense of where things are at, what we can do as a community to focus on vaccinations. And there's really two areas that we believe we could have the most impact. The first is mobile vaccinations to going to those seniors who are currently eligible to receive the vaccine but don't have an ability to get there or live in congregate settings, and so we'll talk a little bit more this evening about Eastside Fire Rescue's initiative for mobile vaccinations and the administration's proposal to help support vaccinations in Issaquah with that. The next area is mass vaccination centers. These would be, these are locations where large numbers of people can come together, as you sure have been seeing throughout the country. There are football stadiums and baseball stadiums being used. We certainly don't have anything like that in Issaquah, but we do have a few areas that would work for a mass vaccination center. So we're going to talk a little bit this evening about supporting financially, putting that together with our partners from Swedish Hospital and Eastside Fire and Rescue. A week or two into the vaccination partnership, we gained another key partner, and that's the city of Semamish. And the city of Semamish, I think, at the mayor's request, the mayor's invitation, has joined us, so really the planning that we're doing with the Community Vaccination Partnership is not only for the Issaquah community, but also for our neighbors in Semamish as well. The second big issue that we'd like to talk about tonight is assistance for shelter. This council is no stranger to this topic. We have been talking about issues regarding eviction, the moratoriums that are in place. At state level, continue the moratorium that was in place under the Trump administration, I believe has been strengthened under the Biden administration, so those moratoriums exist, but still there are people who are in need of shelter. We are seeing homeless in Issaquah in numbers probably not seen maybe ever, but certainly for a long time, so there are clearly people in need here. And in talking with our staff and community partners, the number one thing that we think we need to do over the next ninety days is make additional accommodations for emergency housing for those that are truly homeless, and so we'll talk this evening about some ideas that we have. We'll also talk about what we're doing for homelessness. As you know, the city has funded a position with the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, and we have representatives from the Food and Clothing Bank joining us this evening to talk about the work that they're doing. Next is assistance for businesses. You've heard from the public speakers tonight and those individuals who send emails in that many of our businesses are still struggling. We have allocated quite a bit of money through the CARES Act in 2020, but there still is a need to do that. What that need is, how much money we should spend, is really an open question, and we hope that after hearing from our economic development manager this evening at the council, we'll have an opportunity to discuss what you think is appropriate, the type of financial assistance, the mechanism for evaluating those applications. We really are looking forward to your feedback tonight on the best ways to move forward with that. Community health and recreation, really this came from a process that the mayor's Recovery Task Force went through starting in December, asking our city boards and commissions to go back and have individual discussions about what they thought should be on the city's work plan the first three months of the year, and really three things came from that. That people are anxious to get out and do things. Any of us who've lived through this, I think there's not one of us who wouldn't agree that we're certainly anxious to do things, but of course, to do things safely, but also to be thoughtful of people's physical health and mental health. And through the conversation that we had with the Recovery Task Force, our Parks and Community Services Department has some recommendations this evening, which we'll be talking about. So how do we pay for all this? President Biden has put forward an American Rescue Plan of nearly $2 trillion. The Congress is only now beginning to discuss the merits of that plan. Included in that plan is $350 billion of direct assistance to state and local governments. There is no breakdown currently in the president's proposal as to the allocation of that $350. We don't know what would go to cities, or counties, or states, school districts, other local governments, so our allocation of that is unknown. So while we come here tonight with some dollar amounts that we think make sense and some prognostications of what might be available for reimbursement, should we receive dollars, we don't know with any certainty any money that's coming forward. So as the council considers the type of support that you do, you know, it may need to come from the general fund. I honestly don't think certainly anything we do with vaccinations will, but it's uncertain at this point, and we're looking for the council's discussion and guidance on that subject tonight. So let me talk a little bit more about the mayor's Recovery Task Force, the names of the individuals who have been very diligent in meeting with us over the last many months. The group met every two weeks, and then now is down to a month, every month, a meeting, and so they listened to the board and commission members that made their presentations back at their meeting at the beginning of January. And the priorities that they mentioned, covered most of them, but to bring people together safely, to focus on mental and physical health, to get people vaccinated, to focus on the needs of seniors, focus on economic vitality, and support opening of schools. So from this comment and these discussions, Mayor Polly is proposing an initiative called Issaquah Fund and Fit Outside, and it's a collection of several items that would engage our residents. And at this point, I'd like to ask Jeff Watling, our Director of Parks and Community Services, if he wouldn't mind getting on the line and walking through some of the specifics of these initiatives within the Issaquah Fit and Fun Outside program. Jeff?
You bet. Thank you, City Administrator Bogwitz. Appreciate that. Yeah, this, these opportunities, these ideas come directly really from a rather robust and fun conversation with various board and commission members, as well as the Recovery Task Force. As you know, throughout this pandemic and as we move into recovery, we are so appreciative of the mayor and you as council, your support of our approach of ensuring safe access to our parks, to our trails, to recreation opportunities, and what you see in these five opportunities are just ways that we can further, further that approach as we head into the, into the coming months. And so as we met with staff, as we sort of thought through how we could provide some additional opportunities with partners, these are the five. And real quickly, the first one is an idea of installing, looking for a location and installing some outdoor fitness stations. If you'd imagine, these stations would really focus on multiple, providing fitness for multiple abilities, things focusing on balance, flexibility, using body weight for resistance. We would work with park board members, we'd work with some folks in the sports medicine community. We've already reached out to a certain play vendor, a local play vendor that Kathy McCory referenced as an opportunity to explore purchasing some equipment and installing that and making that free and accessible for residents. The next item was an idea of taking our tennis courts and really seeing how The next item was an idea of taking our tennis courts and really seeing how we might be able to foster additional use. For example, we have a very successful and popular pickleball program inside our community center. How might we take that outdoors? How might we look at some innovative ways of striping pickleball onto the tennis courts, working with that pickleball group and seeing what we could do there? The idea of just further promoting various scavenger hunts, geocaching partnerships. Again, as Kathy referenced, there's some really great ideas out there. This isn't necessarily a request for additional resources as much as how can staff partner with those providers and make sure we're promoting those family-friendly, fun ways to get out onto our trails and within our parks. Another idea that met a lot of support was this idea of what we're calling a walk and learn tour. So this would be temporary installations of interpretive signs, interpretive signs that might tell a story, that might focus on maybe a bit of Issaquah history or nature, habitat, wildlife learning. We would reach out to some of our partner nonprofits for content. And then we would, much like we've done with our dog park tour, we would install, we'd set a schedule and install these interpretive signs in various locations in our trails and our parks. Again, it's just another way to get out and be part of community. And then lastly, as you know, our Concert on the Green program is immensely popular. We're already planning and budgeted for that Concert on the Green program. This is really a discussion to, I think, reinforce the desire that even though we're likely going to have a modified Concert on the Green program, depending on where we're at with Healthy Washington, there's a really a commitment to work with Kiwanis, David Harris, or other partners and offer a Concert on the Green, even if it has to look a little different this year. And then in that discussion, are there opportunities maybe to augment and offer some additional smaller concerts and music opportunities with other partners throughout the community? So again, some ideas that came directly from residents and just a great, a great conversation.
Thank you, Director Watling. We do have a question. Councilmember Goodman has a question.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Director Watling, thanks for coming to our meeting, and this is, looks like a fun list here. You may not know the answer to the question, but on the Walk and Learn Tour on city trails, is that an installation of information that would be the same or is it interchangeable? And the reason I'm asking them, I'm wondering if there's an, if it's interchangeable, it gives an opportunity for people to come back more than once? So I was just curious about that.
Yeah, great question. Though the idea would, it would be four or five different pieces of content and perhaps in different locations. So it would, it wouldn't be the same material throughout the whole year. So maybe for a couple of months, it would be, and these would be signs that are temporary that would look very much like, if you recall, the, the safety signs that we've put up for COVID, right? That perhaps for four months would be a story related to Issaquah history. And then we would switch that out and the next stop would be a whole new piece of content, perhaps on a bit of Issaquah wildlife or nature or, or some other, some other topic. Does that answer the question?
So let's say we add, just for round figures, 10 different signs. Would those, so I understand that all the different signs and locations would be different, but would each location be then able to be changed later? And maybe the answer is yes, with more money, we can change the signs.
Yeah, these are intended to be temporary installations. So these wouldn't be, these wouldn't be permanent. We wouldn't be investing in permanent signs. This would be relatively low cost, very low cost.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember De Michelle would like to ask a question.
Thanks. First of all, Director Watling, thank you for the shout out to Kiwanis. I appreciate that. And I, I wanted to say that I did participate in the Martin Luther King Walk that they had done at the state park, which I think is pretty much the same concept that you're talking about here with the Walk and Learn Tour. And you could say that those signs are a little bit like campaign signs. That's the, the quality of the signs, but then they can be changed out. My question has to do with, with more with concerts on the green. Can you go into a little bit more detail about what you're thinking there? And you mentioned smaller concerts. Are you thinking like on the corner, corners, a little bit like what Dia used to do with maybe a few musicians on corners in downtown Issaquah? Or what exactly are you thinking about there? Thanks.
Yeah, you bet. So yes, absolutely. I think the Martin Luther King installation that was done at the state park is a perfect example of what we would be thinking. Secondly, concerts on the green, what that looks like is really going to be dependent upon where we're at in terms of the Healthy Washington recovery, right? So if we need to, you know, as you know, we've been averaging the last couple of summers, probably 1,000 people each Tuesday night. We might not be able to host that many. So we might have to control numbers. We might have to make giant polka dots in the lawn to, to ensure safe distancing in terms of groups. So we really want to be nimble with our partners and what that looks like and plan for it and schedule those, those performers and do the early work we need to do. In terms of these additional concerts, honestly, that's still to be determined. We would want to reach out and work with Arts Commission, work with Dia and some of our partners. It's really meant to be flexible, you know? Do we want to do something at the shelter at Confluence Park one evening? Do we want to do something up in the Issaquah Highlands one, one evening? It really is just trying to be responsive and understanding that maybe not every resident is going to be able to go to every summer concert on the green at the community center this year. And how might we, again, just foster community coming together in a different, probably a different summer season than usual?
Yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Director Watling, I do not think councilmembers have any further questions at this time, so you can proceed.
That's it for me. Back to, back to you, Ollie.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Next, I'd like to ask Monica Negril, our Human Services Manager, to speak a little bit about what we've done thus far with our response, or what we're planning to do, and a little bit about what she sees as the need moving forward as far as emergency shelter. Monica, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Director Bobkowitz. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm going to spend the next few minutes in providing you with a brief update on what initiatives we've been working on in the past 90 days and where we are currently, and also just in a couple of sentences, a few words about our upcoming work plan items for 2021. So as we all know, we continued our COVID-19 response. We continued our Food and Basic Needs Collaborative meetings. When we first started the collaborative back in March, initially, I believe we were meeting every week for a few weeks. And then as we all got used to how to proceed, we extended our meetings to monthly meetings. And we are still currently meeting on a, every six weeks or so basis, trying to support our partners and trying to identify needs in the community. In addition to the Food and Basic Needs Collaborative, we've been in touch with other partners from the emergency and rental assistance providers to the low-income housing providers, to our partners who provide treatment services, vocational and educational services regionally and locally. We've been trying to maintain the communications with them and learn ways in which we can support them. Currently, we are partnering with the city of Kirkland and the city of Redmond in trying to create Eastside Regional Survey to obtain a more comprehensive update on where our agencies are and the support that they might need as we begin 2021. So we will provide you an update as we continue with that. Moving on to letting you, or providing you a few updates on where we are in terms of the Equity and Human Services Action Plan. Some of you may know the Human Services Commission has been hosting a series of community engagements to learn more from our diverse communities and our residents of color in terms of what are the racial inequities in Issaquah and what are the residents' needs in our community and what would an oversight of the city's equity initiatives might look like? So we are continuing that effort and we hope that the Human Services Commission will, after completing the community engagement, will provide recommendations to the mayor and to you, city council, on what we heard from the community and how we may move forward. As just a brief update, one of our upcoming community engagement opportunities are, it's coming up this Thursday evening, and then we have a final one next Thursday evening. We also conducted a series of focus groups in the last few weeks. So it's been great to hear from the community. On the same update, we are conducting recruitment for two of the human services positions, both the behavioral health professional position that is part of the collaboration with our police department, and the position that's going to be stationed within the police department is now open, and we are accepting applications. The same, we just opened the human services coordinator position that's going to help us increase capacity to continue providing great services to our community. We expect that we are gonna have a first review of these applications and hopefully begin interviewing in February. And with that, I'm gonna move to talk to you just a little bit about our human services grants. These are the traditional human services initiatives here within the city. We are currently working on closing the 2019, 2020 human services grants. Some of you may remember, we've been providing support to 64 programs, and we are currently closing those contracts and working on the new contracts for the 2021 and 2022 grant cycle. In this cycle, we are supporting 57 programs for a variety of services that range from food and basic needs to emergency, financial assistance, supportive housing services, shelter services, treatment for behavioral health, educational and vocational services, childcare. So a wide range of services that we support through the human services grants. And still part of the human services grants, we also are working on the pilot project, the homelessness outreach and case management project. And I'm going to come back to this in just a moment because I would like to talk for a few minutes about it and also introduce you to our partners. And then lastly, our last update for today, I just wanted to highlight some of the upcoming work plan items for 2021. Once we hopefully increase capacity and staffing and we are going to have our team hired, we hope that we are going to begin some work on the human services strategic plan. And this is a refocused work of what formerly, some of you may remember, started as the healthy community strategy a couple of years ago. So our hope is that we are gonna focus our work and hopefully as COVID-19 is, the response to COVID-19 is not going to be such an urgent need, and we are going to be able to really identify the service gaps and the service needs in our community. Our hope is that we can come back to council with a focused strategic plan on what the next three to five years may look like for human services. So more work on that and more information on that as we begin that work. And with that, I just wanted to highlight a few things about the homeless outreach and case management services. We really thank city council for the support with this project as we noticed that the needs of the community members who are homeless in our community have been increasing, especially with COVID-19. Those needs have been bigger than ever, in part because on one end, the COVID-19 restrictions have put a pressure on the existing shelter capacity with physical distancing requirements. All of the shelters in our community have found themselves with having a decreased capacity. They could not accommodate the same number of people as they could in the past. On another end, our shelters also sometimes during this 2020 and even currently, they have been experiencing outbreaks of COVID, which sometimes that means that they had to close for a few days or for a week, or they had to strategize and find alternative ways. So that caused really an increase in expenses. It also caused an increase in staffing needs, and so the needs definitely have been greater than ever on our end. We are grateful, again, with our pilot project. This is pilot because what we tried and decided to do last year, if, as you may remember, traditionally, our city has been funding outreach services through multiple agencies. We were funding in the past outreach services through three different agencies on the east side. However, our funding was only partial. And so with our, this pilot project, we decided to funnel the funding into one grant. The Human Services Commission issued an RFP and we reviewed projects, and this is how we decided to, the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank was chosen as the candidate to provide such services. And with that, I feel like I've been talk-talking for a long, long time. I would love to invite, we have our guest, we have Rebecca Rice from the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. She is the Community Services Manager. And we also have Mike Mathias, who is the new outreach specialist with the food bank. We would like to invite them to introduce themselves and just to say a few words. Rebecca, would you like to start?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having myself and Mike here tonight. And I just want to echo what Monica said. Thank you so much for your support of this position at the food bank and also just the city's longtime support of the food bank. Everyone at our organization feels really lucky to work in a city that has such great leadership and support of our services. So my name's Rebecca, and I have worked at the food bank for about eight years in a variety of positions, and I'm currently the Community and Social Services Manager, and I work one-on-one with our families to help them access additional resources. And I also am lucky enough to work with our newest employee, Mike Mathias, and he's our new homeless outreach and prevention coordinator. And I will let him introduce himself and give a little bit of his background in this work. And then we're happy to answer any questions about Mike's work that you may have.
Thanks, Rebecca. That beeping is a little obnoxious. Okay, so yeah, no, my name is Mike Mathias. I really appreciate the opportunity to serve this community. I was homeless for eight months out in North Seattle. I have a history of some substance abuse issues, a mental illness that I'm in recovery with. And yeah, I mean, I feel like I've found a life calling advocating for the people that have been in that position. And I'm really looking forward to working in this community, specifically because everybody's so giving, everybody's been so inviting, everybody wants to work on this issue and come together as a community and do what's necessary. So it's a really exciting opportunity. I spent all of 2020 working for an organization called Pioneer Human Services, where I was right in the middle of the autonomous zone, working with people with serious mental illness and helping people find housing out there. So I've So I'm bringing a lot of partnerships out to the area that I've formulated over the years and I'm looking forward to making a difference here. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, both of you. We so appreciate you and the partnership. And with that, City Administrator Bob Kowits, before I hand it back to you, I would just like to add that in order for our partners to be successful in their work, we are trying to identify the service needs and we would like to offer them the possibility to be flexible and nimble and swift as they conduct outreach and as they connect our residents with services that they need. And while we as a city do support a wide range of services, what we are doing and we are hoping to request in terms of funding related to shelters is the flexibility to fill the gaps where those gaps exist and where perhaps service capacities are maxed out currently. Thank you so much. We are available for questions.
Thank you. So first, we have a question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Mike, Rebecca, Monica, just so excited to have all three of you here and for, not only here, but just for your service to the community. I've certainly been noticing a lot more of our community members reacting to and commenting on the unhoused population that we've seen around. And I know we're just starting this journey in the city with some new staff and new abilities, but I wondered if you could talk through what it looks like now versus in the past when a community member, you know, maybe calls the police and says, we've got someone who's homeless. One example would be, you know, somebody in the last week was at Confluence Park and there was a little bit of a community uproar over that. So I want to talk about what our community can do in situations like that and how we're reacting differently in order to highlight this.
Thank you so much for that question. Great question. Uh, Councilmember Walsh, so I think the biggest difference that we are noticing right now is COVID-19 in terms of capacity. That's really put a strain on the service availability in our area. As, again, as I think I just mentioned a minute ago, because of the constrictions, let's say if the shelter in Bellevue typically had a capacity of 100 men, because of COVID restrictions, now they had to reduce their capacity, let's say, at 70 people. So on one end, we have that, which is a given just because of COVID. On the other end, if a shelter has breakout, which all of our shelters throughout 2020 had periods of time when they had a COVID breakout, they had to just close doors and not accept anyone new for a week or two. So again, I think that put a strain on service needs and capacities. And so we notice people don't have a place to go, right? And so we notice that more than in the past, even though maybe the number of individuals who are homeless might not have increased, we just notice them because they don't have a place to go. So that's on one end, what's different now than in the past. Other than that, in terms of what our city does to respond to homelessness, I think that kind of like remains the same with the exception that now we have an outreach person who can, in addition to our police and parks staff, they can go and engage with those individuals and engage them with services. Does that help a little bit?
And I see that there are several other people who would also like to add some additional information. So firstly, Mr. Mathias, if, and hopefully I pronounced that correctly.
Mathias, if that's okay. Yeah, thank you, thank you. So yeah, I mean, thank you for the question. I think that's a great example of kind of how things used to be and I'd like to kind of go over what I envision things being moving forward. So initially, when somebody calls and complains about a situation here, I've spoken with the police and usually what occurs is they go out and address it with a 72-hour notice. And what that is, is a notice to vacate. And that's, that's the immediate action. I want to be the intermediary between that response and I want to be able to speak to individuals on, you know, a personal level and see if I can identify alternate solutions before we get to that point. So that's kind of how it has been and how it is. And then as far as that example goes, and I just wanted to point this out, you know, the homeless aren't immune to the fact that COVID is rampant in shelters right now. That's something that they're very aware of. And, you know, to walk into a shelter already is very difficult for people that are homeless, not only on a moral standpoint, but also in a hygienic standpoint, also in a mental health standpoint. These are all barriers to that being a solution to getting people off the streets already. So when you add COVID into the situation, it's just not, it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all approach nor as a design plan. So there needs to be alternative options besides shelters in this area. Thanks, that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. And Director Watling would also like to add an additional response.
Thank you for that, Council President Hunt and Councilmember Walsh, thanks for the question. Just to add maybe some broader context to your question, Councilmember Walsh. So yeah, as managers of these public spaces, we will continue to work with police. Often, we as parks notice or come alongside an encampment. We will work with our city rules that camping is not allowed in our parks, whether you're homeless or not. That 72-hour notice would be posted like it historically has. I think the opportunity we have moving forward that Mike and Monica outlined is now with that notice, we'll also really engage and have an opportunity for Mike to come alongside that person who's experiencing homelessness and see if we can point them towards support and towards services. And so we really see this as complementary as we try and address this very complex issue and find a way to balance managing our public spaces for their intended use, but also meeting people where they're at and guiding, assisting, establishing relationships to move them towards support and services. So a real balancing act. I do thank the example and very visible experience with the shelter at Confluence Park this weekend, I think is evidence of opportunity for us now with Mike to really make sure we're unifying these resources and approaches to be the best managers of the public space, but also, again, meeting people where they're at. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the question and thank you for all of the answers. And we do have another question now from Councilmember, Councildeputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President. This is Chris Ray. Monica, thank you for putting this together and Mike and Rebecca, thanks for everything you do and welcome to the, to the team. I know we're going to count on you both a lot. I wanted to bore in a little bit, Monica, on the other 21 work plan item, particularly the Human Services Strategic Plan and how you will align that planning effort with the citywide strategic plan or if you've thought about the mechanism for doing that.
Thank you, Council Deputy President Ray. Yes, our hope is that everything that we do will eventually be aligned with the citywide strategic plan. I think for the human services initiatives, typically those fall under the social and economic vitality section. And in the initial plan, actually, the healthy community strategy was called out as a work item. So I think the human services strategic plan will just be folded as the refocused work of that initial work. Again, we paused on that initial work with COVID-19 and we also understand that everything's kind of looking now differently. So some of the data that we gathered a couple of years ago might just look differently now. So we are just gonna try to use some of that information and then fold it into a new strategic plan. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, that's great. And clearly, the world has changed from where it was a year and a half ago, so lots of new things to factor in. Thanks for the, for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember DeMichele has a question.
Thank you. Well, to begin with, I'm just thrilled that Mike is on board and that we have this new position and I'm just, I'm just so grateful that this is happening in Issaquah. So welcome aboard, Mike. For Monica and Mike both, this has been a really tough time for the young people in our community and especially those young people who are, well, maybe not most especially because I think it's hard on all of our kids, no matter what their age, but I'm really focused on those kids who are, let's say, 13 to 18. It doesn't look like they're going to have a school year again this year. We know that there's been a huge upsurge in mental health issues and substance use and other things. And of course, our biggest ally in facing those problems is the school district and then schools are closed. So I'm just wondering if I could maybe get a take on what you're seeing among young people in our community? And then have you, you know, have you been thinking about ways that we could start to address this huge impact that has been challenging for young people in our community?
I can start and then perhaps if Mike has additional information from the work that he's been doing in the field, I would love to invite him to respond as well. On my end, the information that I've been gathering or the communication that I've been having is through our partners. On one end, our partners at Friends of Youth, but also here more locally with our partners at the Issaquah Teen Cafe, The Garage. I know The Garage has been doing absolute fantastic work with engaging with our youth in the community, even when schools are closed. And I know that they've been actually the go-to service provider for those youth who might be couch surfing or might not have a place to go. And so yes, we do have information from them that the needs are there and we would love to find ways to support them. They're actually now through the human services grants, they are the recipients of a human services grant and we hope that we can look into ways to partner with them to continue their work and their mission into supporting that population. In terms of what we see in the field, that's where if Mike has additional information, I'm not sure in the, just first couple of weeks on his job, if he heard anything or he was able to engage with any of the youth, but I would love to hear if he has other information.
Thanks, Monica. You know, to be honest with you, I haven't encountered anybody in that age range yet. Now that being said, I mean, typically that's purpose-driven. I mean, people don't want to be noticed or found when they're minors. That's just the traditional approach that I've seen take place. So I can't tell you what the needs are of that particular demographic, but I can tell you that even if I had encountered them, I still wouldn't be able to tell you because there hasn't been a point-in-time count this year for the homelessness, for the homeless that are unsheltered and not accessing services. And that would be that exact demographic. And so since King County's not doing that, I don't think we'll really have a good grip on it this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I am not seeing any other council question.
Thank you, Council President. With that, we'll move on to the next area that we'd like to speak about tonight, and that is our economic development efforts. Jen Davis Hayes, our Economic Development Manager is here and she's going to walk a little bit through what we have done and some of our thoughts as we're moving forward. Jen, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. Good evening, City Council. So I'm here to talk to you about some of the things we've done and looking ahead a bit. Unfortunately, we are still in the response mode, as you all know, phase of our efforts. And so in that, the Direct Financial Assistance for Businesses, we heard some input tonight about business grants. We have, are starting to consider what changes we would make to pursue those business grants, whether that is reducing the cap, looking at things that Chamber President Kathy McCory mentioned. We are also looking at, we would love to have assistance from our friends at the Economic Vitality Commission and/or Vision Partners to help us maybe perhaps answer questions with businesses. A lot of handholding goes into the business grants after we send out the information that they have received a grant. So we will definitely take them up on that offer as we move forward. So we have approximately about 725,000 of eligible unfunded business applications, but we need to reconfirm if they are still eligible because of BNO taxes and business licenses. So that's an estimate and once we, if we do move forward on that, we would do the work that's necessary to determine that. But we're also letting businesses know and encouraging them to apply for the PPP, so that's the Paycheck Protection Program through the SBA. Now, that is alone, but it is forgivable if you follow the rules and regulations. And we remind everyone that we have a no-cost business advisor to help them receive the maximum they are eligible for. So we, we know that the resources that the city can invest will not completely pay for all the loss in revenue, but we hope that together with other resources and pivoting and looking at new business options, that they are able to survive this pandemic. The other piece that we're looking at is the continued regulatory relief and we thank you for continuing that for the next six months for business signage and for outdoor business operations. We're also gonna work with our friends in the Community Planning and Development Department exploring the use of temporary, temporary use of empty spaces. So if we can do some pop-up retail and some other things and make it easy for that to happen, but also safe and making sure that we don't cause any issues along the way. But looking forward about once we, some businesses are starting to recover and hopefully we will all be there soon, we really want to make sure that we provide our businesses the resources to get to the next level. So our business retention is the focus, not only nationwide, but across the world, so really helping our current businesses. And we, and you may remember that the Port of Seattle provides us a grant to help with business, to help with economic development efforts. In the past, it's been focused on economic activities around business recruitment. They have pivoted and want to focus completely on business retention. So we'll be using that funding for our business retention efforts. And we have also received a King County Community Development Block Grant, Grant, for $75,000 to provide business technical assistance to low and moderate income individual entrepreneurs. And so we'll, we'll be starting up that program. We'll also work with our east side partners for our Startup 425 that offers business seminars, not just for startup businesses, but for those who are at the 100 and 200 level and even an accelerator and boot camp program that we started in the last year. And then, of course, we have our Issaquah Loyal campaign. Appreciate Kathy McCory bringing it up. So we'll continue to highlight opportunities to shop, dine and experience local. We're kicking off a Love Your City social media campaign around Valentine's Day to showcase your love of your favorite business. So we encourage everybody who's watching tonight to snap a picture in front of your favorite business or the business product or whatever creative way to show your love for your city, post it online with a tag, @IssaquahLoyal. We'll make sure to, again, get the word out that we, we here in the community really support our local businesses. We won't ignore the needs to attract new businesses to the vacancies that we've begun to see. Issaquah's retail vacancy has been historically low and that often didn't provide new businesses many choices. So we, we do know that some commercial property owners have a list of businesses interested in their vacant spaces and others have no vacancy at all. So we'll work with them to, to really determine what's needed and what's desired for the So we'll work with them to really determine what's needed and what's desired for the, makes sense for them in the long term for the viability of their centers. And we'll also work with our commercial brokers and talking about reaching out to some local chains or businesses in other cities that are talking about expansion and encourage them and to help them understand the opportunities here in Issaquah. And one of the new interesting things is that we will work with our partners to ensure that our new office workers, so those who are working virtually from home, will have the support and connections to business amenities here in the community. We'll continue to pitch opportunities to open branch campuses as offices world reshuffles, if there's an opportunity for some of the larger employers in our area to locate here. And we'll also work with our Sports Medicine Committee to understand the opportunities for medical and healthcare expansion. As far as some projects I just wanted to bring up, so a few of the projects of interest include our Downtown Streetscape. We are working with our Public Works Department and to coordinate with downtown stakeholders to share information and provide input on the actual implementation of the Alder Festival Street and some parklets in downtown, thanks to funding that City Council has approved. For anyone who's interested in that project, you can go to our city's calendar on February 4th at 1:30 the appointment. It has more information there of how you can register to join the meeting. We have reached out to the downtown businesses and property owners along Alder to talk individually with them, that we will continue to gather input as we refine that and implement in spring time. As was mentioned earlier, the Downtown Streetery was a great collaboration between the city and Downtown Issaquah Association. There's a written summary of the project. In the report, we noted the cost in 2020 was about $37,000, and staff hours dedicated to the project were over 500 hours. Our plans are, the administration plans to meet to discuss not just the streetery, but also plans for the use of Front Street in 2021, and we'll return to council with more information to gather input on that plan. One of the things that we're excited about is we hosted our first-ever virtual job fair in October with over 38 booths, virtual booths, and 895 job seekers from the East Side. We plan to continue this platform in 2021 to replace our in-person job fair that we typically held at Pickering Barn in May. This is a great opportunity for our local employers to find talented workers here in their own backyard. And then, another exciting thing we'll be doing some more work on and bring back to council is the 2020 business survey that we completed. We're in the process of analyzing the data and comparing it to previous years. We do have a COVID couple of questions that asked, questions beyond what we typically asked in 2012 and 2016. We'll provide a full report in the near future and have some follow-up actions along that line. Some other work plans that are less tangible, but just important, is to ensure that our business partners on the Economic Vitality Commission and our Vision Partners, so that includes the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Issaquah Association, Visit Issaquah, Issaquah Highlands, and the Gilman Village Merchants Association, that they continue to share and collaborate on what the business needs are. We are integrating these efforts to provide input not only on city-related economic development and other departmental efforts, but on each other's efforts to ensure a strong business climate. The EVC will have joint meetings with commissions such as the PPC this year and provide input on the need for transit, infrastructure, investment, and sustainability this year. We also started a Business E-News last year, quickly to disseminate ever-changing information. And we're going to be continuing to enhance our website content. The Economic Development Dashboard is one example, providing data to not only track the recovery, but to provide data at a local level for businesses and property owners to get a snapshot of our economic vitality. And so, we believe our updates to City Council have been an important component of our efforts to communicate about the support needed for Issaquah businesses. We're excited to see more businesses provide their input on various business topics and look forward to providing additional updates throughout 2021. And that's it.
Thank you. We do have a question. First question is from Councilmember Hall.
Thank you very much. This is Councilmember Hall. Thank you very much for running through that. I appreciate that. I have a quick question for you with regard to business retention. I guess, first, just taking a step back, what exactly does business retention look like? What kind of technical assistance are we providing? And then, follow up to that, you know, what are we hearing out in the community with regards of what kind of assistance is needed? And are we meeting that need? Or is there a greater need that another body needs to help that maybe we can help connect?
Great, great question. So business retention, and I'm sorry for using some jargon, so it's obviously doing efforts to retain the current businesses that we have. And so, that, what we're doing currently is we've contracted with not only Startup 425, but Business Impact Northwest to provide no-cost business advisor services. So people can, entrepreneurs can go to the re starterup425.org website, sign up, and within 24 hours be contacted from a business advisor who's worked with hundreds of thousands of businesses on the same topics, similar topics that you may be facing. They're really great about helping with the PPP and other financial tools they may need to use. But they also can answer questions about marketing, e-platforms, employee relations, et cetera. As I mentioned, we are, did receive some additional money to expand those business technical assistance resources. And what we're looking at is, we'll be doing an RFP to determine who that provider will be. But we're looking at providing part of that money for additional business services focused directly on the low and moderate-income entrepreneurs, but also holding aside some training, group training dollars to be able to address whatever needs come up. And so, you know, initially, I think, you know, obviously, the needs right now are customers being able to kind of continue to know, to plan ahead, and that's been a real challenge for a lot of businesses. A lot of them have pivoted. A lot of may have pivoted onto e-platforms early on in the pandemic, but they may not be fully utilizing that. So I think we're going to focus a little bit on that. And how you market to your, to your customers now is maybe different, right? So with all, I should say, all of us, but lots of people are shopping online. How do, what things change when things are completely open? Will we continue to purchase more online? And how can smaller businesses, who may not be at the top of that search for Google, help to take advantage of that opportunity? So there's, that's kind of what we've been hearing so far. I think, you know, the other pieces that we've heard in general are just some, you know, space needs and thinking about co-locating. So whether you're restaurants, if you're retail, co-locating, it's for smaller footprint size you may need. And so, we have, again, we have technical assistance providers. And we also work with the Small Business Development Center, which is a statewide organization to, that people can, again, no-cost talk to and get resources, as well as SBA volunteers. So we know that there's different, different service for every entrepreneur, and we try to connect them with what they need best. So, did that answer your question completely?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I also have a question on this topic. Regarding the Direct Financial Assistance for Businesses, which is the business grants, we had a few different kinds of business grants. I believe the city gave $1.28 million in business grants in 2020. And I'm wondering, going forward, there is an ask or a recommendation for an additional $250,000 for these business grants. And I wondered if you could explain a little bit about if there are recommendations or considerations for changing the program, giving the grants differently or different allocation to the different sorts of grants? We've done several different kinds of grants, including winterization recently and several other kinds as well. And so, I just wondered if you could give us some more information about that.
Sure. And so, thanks to the allocation in November, what we did for the latest grant round was to continue down the list of the Small Business Response Grant applications that were in July. So over time, from the original CARES Act money that was allocated to the King County CARES Act money was allocated, and then the second round of state CARES Act that was allocated, we continued down the list and continue to provide grants to different, various businesses. Looking forward, we have, we have discussed with our Vision Partners and internally about potentially doing a simple new application for businesses that have not received funding before from the city to get the latest information. And as City Administrator Bob Kowits mentioned early on, we don't know if we're going to get federal funding for this, but if we do and we're able to get it reimbursed, we want to make sure that we have the latest information and we're, we're going to be following as much as we can to the previous CARES rules, assuming that that would be pretty much in line with what future will be. But, so we have talked about doing a simple application for businesses. We have also talked about, there's other cities in the region that did do different amounts for different sizes of businesses. And so, we could look at, if you're, again, similar to something that Kathy McCory mentioned, is if you're a sole proprietor or having one to three employees, it's a certain level and more above that. I know that early on, we did not make any distinction between home-based businesses and brick and mortar, and that's an option as well. So we have not made those decisions, but know that we will continue to work through the details and are welcome any input along the way.
Okay, thank you. And I am not seeing any other questions from council at this point.
Thank you, Council President. What we'll do now is move on with our next slide. So you've heard an overview of many of these points, but I'd like to go through them once again and really also focus on the one area that we still need to speak about, and that is vaccinations. But the first item, $75,000 for the Issaquah Fit and Fun Outside Program. Again, Jeff Otting has gone through that and certainly is available for additional questions as you deliberate. The next two issues deal with vaccinations. This is a very much a moving target. The mayor and her community task force has, you know, had a lot of the principals in our community at the table talking about this. And there's really, I think, two areas that we want to try to be focused on in the next several weeks. One is the area of mobile vaccinations, and the other is the setup of a mass vaccination center that would serve Issaquah and Semamish. On the line this evening with us is Jeff Clark, the Chief of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Department. And Chief Clark, if you wouldn't mind coming on the line and talking a little bit about where you feel we're at with mobile vaccinations, and I know that one of your battalion chiefs is with you as well, so please feel free to have him add anything that you'd like, Glenn. But Chief Clark, if you could share some thinking.
Yes, thank you, Wally, and good evening, council. Thanks for the invite. Appreciate being here. And in just a minute, I'm going to let Glenn talk about the details, but I just want to give you the background that a few weeks back, we appointed Glenn full-time working on vaccinations. So he is what I consider our in-house expert on vaccinations, and he's been working diligently on attempting to provide mobile vaccinations, which we hope to be able to provide in the next two weeks. And while I think you all do want a few details, I'm going to ask him to give a quick overview of what we are looking at. And if you would like him to go deeper, we'll just rely on your questions to guide that piece. So Glenn, can you give him a quick overview of mobile vaccinations for me?
Yes, thank you, chief, and thank you, City Council, and Wally, for the opportunity to talk. So Eastside Fire and Rescue really just has the mission of providing as much vaccination to as many community members as possible. We started with the phases of the firefighters moving into the next support groups of the vulnerable population, mostly the ones that live in adult family homes that don't have the ability to get out and get to a vaccination site. We saw that as a need. We started calling our partners and seeing what we could do to get this moving. Around the same time, the City of Seattle recognized that as an issue and started piloting a mobile vaccination unit, something we've really never done in the county. So what that looks like in the weeds is we have firefighters that are now in the middle of being trained to deliver vaccinations into people's arms. There's a, there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with that for King County and for the State Department of Health, but we're going to work through those issues. But at the end of the day, you know, we're really hoping that, we keep pushing the time back a little, a little more every day, just because the vaccine is not readily available as we had hoped. So that's our biggest hurdle, but our firefighters are being trained to go out into the community in our vehicles, with our equipment, and vaccinate people. Our biggest holdup, again, is the vaccine itself, which we are working through the process of getting. We hope to be on the road within two weeks. I had a very productive meeting today with Monica and Brian from the City Visiquah, who are helping me and going to be doing the registration portion of that. Again, there's paperwork that's involved. And so, the partnership that we have with Issaquah is extremely important to make this happen, and we're very thankful for it. And we've made the hurdles of being able to do it. We're trained to do it. Now, we're waiting on the vaccine to get it out there. So I think Brian and Monica and I think we are going to do a soft roll at the end of next week, and if the vaccine is in our hands, which we are optimistically cautious, but maybe on the 8th, we can roll out into an adult family home in Issaquah and start administering some of those vaccinations.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and giving us additional information about vaccinations. We do have several questions. The first one is from Councilmember DeMichele.
Sorry, I had to get off mute. So, you know, we've heard a lot about the issues around equity, and I'm just wondering if there's a plan to make sure that we reach out to marginalized communities and people of color in the Issaquah area with these mobile vaccinations? I'm just wondering what the plan is there and if that's a lens that we're looking at this through. Thank you.
Let me start. Councilmember DeMichele and others can chime in. Absolutely, we will be, and I think that that lens will be even more important as we move forward with the various stages of the vaccination. At this point, those who are eligible for the vaccination are pretty much divided by age and by living circumstances. So what we're trying to do is document, you know, those individuals, those group settings, and that is, as Glenn mentioned, is what city staff is helping them do. So I think we're just trying to make sure we have the universe of that list. And then, as we move forward with additional phases, as we'll talk in a moment about the mass vaccination center. I think that's one of the more critical pieces, so that we have a close-in center that not only we can have people come to, but also if we need to do outreach, provide transportation, that'll be a lot easier for some of those communities if they have a mass vaccination facility is in Issaquah. So we could talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Does anybody else want to comment on the equity issues with mobile vaccinations?
I will, I will just offer one additional piece of action for each of you on the council. If at any time you hear of somebody that you believe is being marginalized or is having difficulty accessing, the whole idea behind mobile vaccinations is to go where people can't get to mass sites or anything. So please just pick up the phone and let myself know, and I will be sure to plug in with Glenn and the Issaquah team, and we will get it addressed. We will be very proactive on that front.
Thank you.
And Monica, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Certainly, I can add that as we are preparing and we are making our lists, we already identified the list of our community members that come from the diverse communities, either direct members that we interacted with over the last few months or agencies that work with our diverse communities. So for example, we identified and we started connecting with the Hutchinson Houses, a larger apartment complex, and with the Chinese Information and Resource Center organization that we fund, or the India Association. So we kind of like started creating the list of those communities, so then when we are ready, we can contact them and coordinate with them.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele, does that answer your questions?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Walsh has a question.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. My question's more on the two mobile vaccination and mass vaccination ideas that we're proposing as funding here. and mass vaccination ideas that we're proposing as funding here. These are obviously going to things that will serve communities outside of just Issaquah. And so I'm wondering whether other communities are also contributing to Eastside Fire and Rescue, and whether Semamish is proposing or considering funding as well for the mass vaccination center.
Let me start. Let me start and have Chief Clark jump in. On the mobile vaccination side, the conversations that Chief Clark and I have had would be that we would set up a fixed rate for the mobile vaccinations, and we would be charged back for the service that is done in the city of Issaquah. So we would not be funding this service through the Eastside Fire and Rescue service area. Certainly, Semamish is involved in these discussions, and I'll come back to that in a second. But as far as the mobile vaccination is concerned, we'll just get billed for that cost. Chief, do you want to add anything about that before we get into the mass vaccination center?
I do, just briefly. We are also, depending on the amount of vaccine we're able to get, we may take one of our existing units that all of you pay for, meaning all of our partners pay for, and utilize on a daily basis during the business day to deliver vaccines. If that's the case, that will not require any extra cost from any partner, and that could be used anywhere. But Wally is absolutely right on what we're agreeing to, and I suspect, from my point of view, I suspect Semamish will do the same thing for their residents.
So that then takes us to the mass vaccination center. And if Council President, maybe I can just spend a moment talking a little bit about that, in part to answer Councilmember Walsh's question. We have been looking the mayor's community partnership over the last couple of weeks about what would be the best next step for a mass vaccination center. Right now, King County is estimating that there will be 10 mass vaccination centers. Two of those, they themselves, King County is moving forward to open, and they are saying at this point that they hope to open them as soon as next week. One is in Kent, and one is in Auburn. The one in Kent would be at the Hockey Arena that is located there, and that would be a walk-in center. You'd make appointments, but you would walk into the facility to be vaccinated. The second facility, at least as of late last week, that the county was identifying was in Auburn, and that would be a drive-through. So you may have seen pictures in the press and other areas where you do not leave your car, you're vaccinated, you park for a period of time, so you can be observed, and then you go on your way. So those are the two centers that King County is working on. We know from our discussions with the city of Seattle that they are beginning to stage a very large mass vaccination center in one of the two downtown sports stadiums, and then would have smaller mass vaccination centers in the city of Seattle. So we are proposing that the city of Issaquah and the city of Semamish, working with Eastside Fire and Rescue, would move forward with organizing this mass vaccination center. A key partner with this is Swedish Hospital. They have been at the table with their senior staff since the beginning of these discussions a few weeks ago. Their message to us from Swedish is that they are happy to be a partner, they are happy to participate, they are happy to help us gain vaccines, they're happy to provide staff to provide inoculations, but really are looking to others to get the site up and running. So in discussions with Chief Clark, we think that the model that the city of Seattle has put together using key staff in the fire service who are trained to organize, deal with these types of setups, that that would make the most sense for us. So this $250,000 number is a large estimate. We think it's probably much smaller to get started up. We are looking that this would be a six-month investment overall for the vaccination center. In talking with the city of Semamish, they are wholeheartedly in support of moving forward. I think we all understand that we're going to need to take this on ourselves and create the team of community partners to provide this. So our hope, and I'll let Chief Clark collaborate, is that Eastside Fire and Rescue would organize a group that would be responsible for setting up the center. We have identified Issaquah High School as the location. The Issaquah School District has been very supportive in our discussions. They are working themselves on a vaccination center for their employees at Issaquah Middle School. But this would be located at Issaquah High School. We have the full support, the superintendent, in moving that forward. I think the school district is prepared to provide the facility and whatever equipment they have on site. But we really will need someone else to organize this, working with Swedish, to make that happen. So Chief Clark, do you want to add anything about how you see this working as we move forward to set up this mass vaccination center?
Yes, thank you. The, sorry, I just got a text from the guy I put in charge of this, so making sure he wanted me to say something. I want to say that, first of all, I really appreciate the vision that the city has on this issue, and I appreciate this partnership. I truly believe that if we don't do this, that it won't get done in our service area. So your city leadership is to be commended for this. Secondly, what we're doing at Eastside is we are now setting up a command structure that will include, Andrew Stevens is our emergency manager, as you know, from Semamish. I've reached out to Semamish separately to get their blessing to allow me to direct him to lead this effort. As a professional emergency manager, he's well-equipped to do so. We will have firefighters and fire officers trained to run the shelter and to administer the vaccines where necessary, and hopefully, community partners like Swedish will assist us with this as well. We are setting a target and an initial goal of being able to stand up a site that can deliver 3,000 vaccines a day. We, of course, need vaccinations, the vaccines in hand. In our, talking with our partners at Seattle Fire, they are going to allow us to learn from everything they've put together and watch what they're doing. They are gearing up and hoping for increased vaccinations to arrive starting March 1. So we are going to target that date to be capable and ready and willing with our all partners, including site or sites, whatever ends up happening here with the vaccines and our capabilities. So between now and March 1, we will ramp that up. And the note that Andrew wanted me to share with the group as well is that to keep in mind, while we are putting these, we're asking you to put this money forward, Semamish, I am sure, will be putting some money forward towards this as well. Eastside, of course, will have some. But we also are anticipating that this will be reimbursable from FEMA in the long run. But that's a secondary thought. The first part is getting this up and running.
So Councilmember Walsh, that's a very long answer to your question. I hope we got it.
Very thorough, as usual. Thank you.
Council President, are there other council questions, or shall we continue?
There is a question. Councilmember Hall has a question.
Thank you, Council President. This is Councilmember Hall. Just a quick follow-up to that. I appreciate how granular you got there, because going into this, I really wanted to get kind of in the details. I'm wondering if you can kind of walk us through the next couple steps that are ahead of us for the mass vaccination center. Are there requirements and applications that have to be met and submitted with the State Department of Health? What, like, I get now the partnership, who's contributing what, but how, what's the first step to actually get it to happen? What comes next?
Well, let me go ahead and start. I think the council's support is the first step that we can do this. There are no rules. There is no handbook as to, you know, how this gets done. And I think from the discussions that we've been having over the last several days, I think it's become clear to the leadership at Eastside, the leadership in Issaquah and Semamish, that if we don't do this, there's no one else will come and get this done. So we're in touch with King County. We've been in touch with Swedish Hospital. They are all, of course, parts of larger networks of things. We will let all those parties know our intention, that a location has been identified, that we are standing up our own organizational structure. And I think, and we'll look for as much support as we can. We will, we will look to our officials in King County. We will look to our officials in the state legislature, because certainly, the state Department of Health is the one that ultimately submits a statewide ask of vaccinations each week. And so if the state is not supportive of this, there will not be an allocation. So we will, I think, over the next several days, next couple of weeks, you know, broaden our list of partners to include those in other parts of King County, to include other parts of the state government, so that when the vaccines do become available, that we will be on a list, and so they can be allocated to us, and we can move forward. But again, it became very clear that unless we did this ourselves, no one is going to come do this for us. And so that makes us a little bit of making this up as we go along. But as long as we're in touch with the network of health providers and emergency providers in the state county, I feel pretty confident we're going to be on the right path. Chief Clark, did you want to add anything?
I'll just echo what you said. Bottom line is, the only thing we'll be limited by is receiving vaccines. Everything else, we either, thanks to Glenn's work, have received the authority and/or in the process of getting the training. So we're only limited by the lack of vaccines in our hands.
So Matt, Council President, if that, we can certainly have other questions when the council has deliberations at the end of the presentation. If you'd like, I can move on to the last two pieces, and then we can wrap up the presentation. Is that all right?
Yes, that will be fine. And I know in advance that we will have questions on the emergency shelter piece.
Great. So let me move on to that. As Monica, I think, mentioned very well, we're at a difficult stage in the pandemic with the issue of emergency shelter. There are people in need on lots of different levels, people who are camping in our parks, who have been displaced because of COVID outbreaks in other shelters. And so we're trying to come up with a plan that provides some flexibility. There's nothing magic to this number, other than it's sort of an order of magnitude that we think would be helpful to us. What we're looking for this evening is some feedback from the council, if you believe, of the list here of priorities. This is indeed a priority. And if it is, we would go back, work with our partners, come up with a more specific allocation of these funds, likely keeping some for ourselves for use, as well as allocating some to our community partners. With that, we can either have the question, or Monica, if you'd like to add anything else before we get into the council's questions.
No, I think we can start with questions, and then we can fold it back in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember DeMichele.
So this is the one arena here where I am questioning the amount of money, and I'm not questioning how much. It just seems like a small amount. So my first question is, is this just for the cost through April? I mean, we started off saying this was for the next few months. Or, and then what's the vision here? How many, how many people are we thinking we can accommodate? It just feels to me like 75,000 is just a drop in the bucket when you're operating an emergency shelter. So a little bit more information about how that number was arrived at, and how many people we hope to serve.
Yes, thank you so much for the question. And perhaps I can start with clarification. So our intent when we are requesting $75,000, it is to provide flexible funds for us to be able to either add to our existing funding support to one of the shelters, or to perhaps provide some flexibility, case by case, to add some motel vouchers if needed, or perhaps look into some creative ways to provide some subsidy. And what I mean by all of this is, for example, as our outreach coordinator started engaging with residents who are homeless, we learned, to no surprise, that there's no one size that fits all, right? Each individual is very unique in their needs. And, for example, somebody might have some medical needs. We just had, over the weekend, somebody with that. And so perhaps we, in that particular case, it might be helpful to have a motel voucher for a couple of days until we identify a longer-term plan. In other cases, for example, we learned that there are some homeless residents who have funding coming in each month. However, their funding is not enough for rent, so perhaps we could look into some creative ways for some subsidies. So again, at this point, we just kind of like, as City Administrator Bob Kowits mentioned, we just kind of like put the number in based on some just initial information that we had. But certainly, we would love to go back and bring in additional information. At this point, I think we are just looking for a broader approval, I guess.
And I will say that I was reading support for emergency shelter, that the city was going to operate an emergency shelter. So thanks, thanks so much for that clarification. I still, I think I would like to see a little bit more around that, because, again, knowing how massive this problem may turn into in the next few months, I still would question that we might need more money in that there. And it seems to me like an additional 25,000 would be, you know, very legitimate and useful in that particular area. But if we could, when we address this again, if we could come back with a little bit more information about how the money could possibly be spent, I would appreciate that. But I'm glad to hear that we're not running, actually running, an emergency shelter. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. Just the same, yes.
Thank you. I did have a question also, and it was mentioned by Councilmember DeMichele, and maybe this can be a request for future information. But it would be very helpful for me to get an estimate of how many people we would be expect, how many people we would be expected to be able to serve with this amount of funding, because it does seem variable. And I also don't have a sense of how many people, but also how long this funding would last. And so having a check-in would also be helpful, maybe when half the money is spent, so that council has some information about it. And so, again, those are questions, but they can also be in our future information.
And then, Council President, just to kind of wrap up the items on this list, is the business assistance grants. Jen, I think, gave a good overview. You've heard from members of the community this evening. Again, this dollar amount is an estimated dollar amount. The need is likely greater. I think as we talk about sources of funds, this will be something that we'll need to be considered. But clearly, we're looking for any kind of additional direction from the council. First, if there's support for doing additional grants. Secondly, what the form and substance of that would be. And then, just to wrap up the presentation, then we'll take the presentation down and answer questions. Just wanted to go over again what I think the potentials for reimbursement will be. I think it fits really into three buckets. The $75,000 for the Issaquah Fit and Fun Outside, though that initiative, I think, would need to come through cities, city funds, either through the $400,000 that the council has set aside, or we would identify other funds, probably fund balance, ending fund balance from that, from 2020. But I don't see that that would be something that would be reimbursed. All the remaining items, as Chief Clark said, I think anything that we spend on vaccinations will likely be reimbursed ultimately. The timing of that would certainly be not immediate. So there would need to be an investment upfront for both the mobile vaccinations and our support of EFER, as they would guide the setup of the mass vaccination center. And then, lastly, the support for emergency shelter and business assistance grants. If there is an allocation from Congress to cities, I think the hope is that the requirements would be similar to what the CARES Act were, and certainly, these two would have been reimbursable under CARES Act dollars. If there's not money from the federal government to support cities, then there may not be funds for that reimbursement. So with that, again, asking the council to receive the updates, to review the funding recommendations, provide feedback this evening. Our hope would be then to come back to the city council at your regular meeting on Tuesday, February 16, with the required actionable items to move these things forward. So with that, I'll take down the presentation, and many of us are here to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. I will give a moment for anybody who has a question to indicate in the chat. I am actually not seeing anyone at this time. So we do have a public comment period after questions, and then we will have an opportunity for comments, as well as additional. So we do have a public comment period after questions, and then we will have an opportunity for comments as well as additional questions if they come up. So at this time, I will open up the public comment period and I will ask the city clerk if anyone has indicated that they would like to speak or signed up to speak.
Thank you, Council President. I do see we have a few phone-in callers still with us. If you are interested in making comments on the presentation tonight, please press star three on your phone. That's star three, and I will call your number. Going to give them just another half minute here. All right. And I'm not seeing anyone indicated desire to speak.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I will close the public comments. And I did previously summarize the email comments that we've received. So we will, at this time, begin the council comments and council direction and any other information that council members would like to provide. I do, since there is a lot of different parts of this, I I will try to summarize the council's discussion and direction at the at the end. And I thought if it's okay with council, I would like to try to talk about things in the different categories that they were discussed in. So we could go through parks and get comments on that direction and then go through the, in the order of the presentations and then overall comments. So if that would be okay with council, I think that would help me organize comments a little bit better or summarize the comments. Okay, so firstly, we have the parks and recreation programs, those updates, as well as the recommended additional funding of $75,000. So did any council members have any questions on that or comments on that? Councilmember Hall?
Thanks, Council President. A quick one. This is Councilmember Hall. I guess just, yeah, right away, I mean, I love this. I love that the ideas came directly from city board and commission members in particular. I, my only concern with this list is, and maybe Director Watling can jump in here, but my only concern is this fitness station, not kind of understand or not really picturing in my mind what that would look like. And, you know, wanting to make sure we're not necessarily encouraging touching common public spaces while there's still a pandemic going on. So I'm not sure if that's something we thought about or we're committed to to finding outdoor fitness alternatives for people to stay safe and et cetera, et cetera.
Director Watling here. Yeah, yeah, great, great question. I think as we look at options, this would be similar equipment to, there would be touching, similar to play equipment. So, you know, I think we would estimate, as we work with partners, as we work with a vendor, as we determine a location, as we look at installing something this spring, it would be dependent upon where we're at in terms of our Healthy Washington Plan, right? And and so right now, currently, other similar amenities are open. As we continue to interact and get guidance from public health, I think the recognition of surface contact and length of time that a virus is with surface contact, that is something, again, that agency is supportive of us having play equipment and and other similar benches and other areas open.
Okay, thank you. And I see that we have a comment from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Yeah, I just want to say, in addition, the idea that all of this came from the commissions and the boards and all of that, just great conversations that I've heard there. So appreciate that. I really like the idea of the outdoor fitness stations, not only as something that can be used during this time, but going forward. I think that's a great idea. I would just say, hey, the more that we can put it in an area that has access to the people that would use that, the better. So I just want to be aware of location, particularly since we have all of these park plans going forward and how does that navigate through it. So, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Hall, question?
Thanks, Council President. Sorry, this is Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Walsh just made me think of this, too. I thought that was a really good idea and also, you know, thinking of placement of the fitness centers. Have we also considered Director Watling placing fitness centers in areas around the city that aren't necessarily close to nearby parks or tennis courts or et cetera, kind of as an almost an equity initiative?
Yes, absolutely. I think as we have explored this and looked at this, I I I think what we might be doing is piloting stations like this or equipment like this, that location is going to matter where we put this. I think we are looking at Valley Floor. I think between the Rainier Trail and some of our other park spaces, we can find a location that doesn't, isn't redundant with other recreational opportunities, but supports and and again, really promotes access to majority of residents. And and hopefully, what we find as we measure use and support is there's such a variety of this type of equipment. It might be something that we're looking at doing multiple places as we continue to activate and modernize our park system.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. I am not seeing any other comments on this one. So I did have a few comments. This is Council President Hunt. One thing that I think would be important is there was some information that was given today around how the concerts on the green could potentially be done safely, depending on where we are in the pandemic, when that would be considered again. And so if that's, if that's one of the things that we're going to be funding, I would really like more information in a written form about how we expect that we might be able to do it safely. And I think the Parks Department has done a great job explaining where we are in the pandemic and what what can be done safely. So I would just like that level of detail for the concerts on the green. And then I also, when we're talking about prioritization of these different funding buckets, I think that these things are, they are definitely fun and I think that they will be much appreciated. But I also think that in terms of the funding prioritization, there are more important things on this list, such as the vaccinations. Okay, and I see we do have some more comments, I think, unless I'm out of order. But I think next is Councilmember Walsh.
Nope, we're all good.
Okay, never mind then. So that was my comment on the parks piece. And if there are no other comments on that one, we will move now to the human services, funding and programming. Is there any comments on that? Okay, I'm not actually seeing anybody have comments on this. I will provide a comment on this. I I think that the $75,000, I had a similar reaction to the $75,000 funding request to Councilmember DeMichele, and that it seems like it's a fairly small amount of money for what we expect to be a large problem. So I would like more information about how many people we would expect it to serve and how long we would expect that funding to last with the current services that we are expected to be providing with that funding. So basically, just a lot more information on the scope of the problem that we're trying to address, as well as the extent to which we think this funding will have an impact and what impact that is. So that would, that would all be really helpful. It's hard for me to consider this amount without that additional information. The other thing that I found concerning, find concerning about this is that we have information about how prevention is so much more, is is so important in this area. So preventing people from becoming unsheltered is so important. And I think that these services, they're emergency services, so they're absolutely needed. But the prevention piece, I think, we need to take into consideration as well. And so I would, I would be interested in considering additional funding for rental assistance because I think that that prevention piece has been shown to be very effective and a very important piece. Okay, so now we do have some comments. Councilmember DeMichele has a comment.
Yeah, I will just, this is Councilmember DeMichele. I would just, well, first of all, addressing the vaccination, the mobile vaccination outreach and then the Mass Vaccination Center, I really want to commend everybody who's working on that. That is a huge project. And I think that leadership has had great foresight in in outreach to the partners that we're involving. I think the assessment is correct. If we don't do it, I don't think anybody else will. And so I really just want to commend everybody who's working on that and go forward and do do good. I will plus one Council President Hunt's comments on the emergency shelter and hope that we can get a little bit more information on that. But I, not because I oppose it, but because I support it, I want to make sure that we're allocating the appropriate amount to that particular line item. So I'm generally in supportive of the entire package. And I'd just like to have a little bit more information when it's brought back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a comment from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. So this line item being called Support for Emergency Shelter brings up ideas of, oh, we're going to run a shelter, but the description sounded more like a more flexible rental assistance that could be used for other things, including potentially putting somebody up in a hotel or something else. And so I'd like more details on that. It also leads me to think, like, are we interested? Would any portion of this be for rental assistance? And so those are the questions that come up in my mind. I also just generally think we've done a lot for businesses. We started out doing a lot for rental assistance, and that hasn't happened as much lately. And so while I do support the idea of support for the more emergency portion of shelter, I'd like to see that expand. And I'd like to see more funds going toward this area because I just think this is such a huge need for our community.
And Council, Council President, Councilmember Walsh, first, I apologize if perhaps the shelter should have been small S versus large S. I I think really what we want to focus, what we came here tonight to talk about was focusing on emergency shelter. And I think that there's a variety of ways to accomplish that. And we will, and we will come back with more details. I think it's very helpful to hear the second piece of this, which is rental assistance, send assistance issues. And we'll go back and and do some additional review of that. That's, again, one of the reasons we're here at a study session is to get that kind of feedback. So and that there's interest in investing additional dollars as well. So we'll work over the next couple of weeks and come back to the council on the 16th with all of those bases covered that Councilmember Walsh just mentioned.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Walsh, are you concluded with your comments? Okay, so now we have a comment from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I just have comments on the variation of the same themes. So for the $75,000 for the emergency shelter assistance, interested, I think the questions are similar to the one that I have, and that is the basis for, the basis for coming up with that number and how far we think that money will go and for what? And maybe some examples about, about not just how we would use it, but what it would cost per each. I mean, if we're helping somebody in emergency, in a shelter that exists already, what does that look like? What do we spend the money for? I don't, I don't quite understand that. And not that I don't support it, I just want to understand it. And the rental assistance, interested, I think there are some additional resources for rental assistance that may be coming down from the state and the Fed. So I'd be interested in have that information and see how that money might be trickling down to locals and what our role might be. And we may not have all the answers yet, but I think we should start looking at that as part of the, the next time we talk about this. And then, yes, agree with, thank you very much for the partnerships, the partnership between Issaquah and Eastside Fire. It's just really, the things we've been able to do with Eastside Fire as a, as a partner on so many different levels has just been, just been such, just great. And this is just, frankly, kind of above and beyond what I ever imagined that we would be able to do with Eastside Fire. And I'm just really thrilled. So thanks. Whoever worked on this, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members have any comments on any of the human services funding requests or programming? And I think this is including then the vaccination. So any other comments on the vaccination infrastructure request? Okay, I don't see anyone. I will make a comment on the vaccination, so both the Mass Vaccination Center as well as the mobile vaccinations. I think that for me, this is the top priority. It affects all of the other priority areas. It affects our ability to get together. It affects our ability for people to get back to work. It is just the most important thing right now. And as has been pointed out, if we don't do it, it won't get done. And there's a huge need for this right now, even for people that are qualified and need these vaccines. There's just not the infrastructure in place right now to get those vaccines to folks. So I think we need to step up. And I really appreciate the partnership as well. For me, this is the top priority in this list. Okay, I'm checking one more time if there's any additional comments on that one. Councilmember Ray has a comment.
I'm sorry, I might be premature. I have kind of a general comment, so I wasn't sure if we were, we were taking a general comment yet or not.
Well, we, we do have also the business grants, and then I was thinking of doing general comments, but you are welcome to comment whenever you like.
I'll just hold until, until we get there.
Okay, thank you. That will help me just organize so I can summarize it then. Okay, so I'm not seeing any more comments on this particular section or these funding recommendations. So I will now ask if council has any comments on the business assistance grants and economic development programs and the information that was presented on economic development. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Yes, the need is huge. I think we've gotten to the point where we probably need to re-accept applications. I think we've also gotten to the point where being able to differentiate between a brick and mortar and a smaller individual business and the allocation amounts is pretty important. So I would support both of those ideas. And I think if we can better accomplish them with a new application that allows someone to indicate one or the other, I'm fine with that being a slight delay in making those, being able to make those allocations. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I think the need is really, really great in our business community. And I, it's a, it's a huge priority for me. I mean, everything is a priority. It's so weird to say that. But it, you know, I just want to, want to stress that it's a priority. Keeps, you know, the businesses, you know, we employ people that pays them, that helps them receive money so they can pay their rent, so they can buy food, so they can, you know, not feel like they're in a constant crisis. It's just really buy food, so they can, you know, not feel like they're in a constant crisis. It's just really, really important for people's livelihood. So I do support that. I'm looking forward to more information about, you know, when we follow up and, you know, do some more, you know, recon on how the landscape might have changed in various ways. I'm, I'm interested in learning if, you know, we need to somehow put more money to this effort. And, you know, maybe we get reimbursed for that and, and that's wonderful. Also, just thrilled with the way that the streetery worked out and I, you know, and I know there were a lot of folks involved in that, which just gotten really, really great feedback. And I think it helped folks a lot. It was an opportunity for us to pilot something. And I think we will probably continue some version of this, is my guess, after the pandemic. And I think the Downtown Issaquah Association did a great job being involved and helping with that. So I really appreciate that. But I'm glad to read in the materials in here tonight that we're, we're going to look at continuing to work on having a streetery. So thanks for that.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I did also have a comment on this, on this topic, and that is that I would also be interested, like Councilmember Walsh was speaking to, I would be interested in considering a different way of allocating maybe a more research, more needs assessment of the businesses that are asking for the grants more targeted. I know when we first began this, we determined who all was eligible and then from that, we randomly chose the, the amount that could be funded. And I think at this point, it would be helpful to revisit that and see if we can have a more targeted approach or more of a strategy for making sure that the people who need the funding the most are getting it among our business community. The other thing that I would, I am interested in considering is that we have this list of people who are still waiting for, who applied for grants many months ago and are still waiting. So we have allocated 1.28 million dollars in business grants, but from that original list, there's still a number of businesses that are waiting. And so one thing that I was interested in and would like more information on is if we were to allocate the $250,000 over that, that remaining businesses, I believe it would be around $5,800 per business if we were to finish out that list. And so I, I think it depends on who still is eligible and who still is requesting that money among a couple of other factors, but I'd be interested in that as well, as a different way of allocating the funding, slightly different than the way we've gone forward. But overall, I know the business community, there really is a need. They are, and, and I think the streetery has been good and I think that the economic support that the city has provided has been really valuable. So overall, I think it's been really good. I think the funding amount is probably, is probably a good amount, but I would like to explore different ways of allocating it at this point. So that was my comments on the economic development one, and I'm not seeing any further comments on that piece. So at this point, if there are general comments, and I will start off with Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. A couple of things, we talked a little bit about wanting to have more understanding how the shelter was, support was derived. I would actually like to see that same level of detail for, for all of these. So when it comes to the vaccinations, how many people are we looking at vaccinating? What are we getting for? What's the basis of, of the numbers that we've come up with? And then also from a business grant perspective, what's the, what's the basis for those? So it's a general feeling that I'd like to have a little more detail on how the estimates were derived. Secondly, we can't, I guess we can make everything a priority, but I think we need to prioritize this list because you know, it's, they're not all the same. I, I believe that vaccinations is our, our highest priority. I think sheltering and business grants is our second priority. And sadly, I think our, our fun and fitness is our, our lowest priority in, in the scheme of things. And the reason for wanting to prioritize is this is in total a $700,000 ask for additional funds. And so I'd like to understand what the impact would be because it's going to become out of ending fund balance, I assume. So when it comes back for this decision, I would really like to see what the financial implications are. And I recognize that we may get reimbursed for some portion of it, maybe, you know, even up to $625,000 of it. But we're still going to be footing the money, our, forwarding the money until that reimbursement comes through. And that puts us in a bit of a, I think, ending fund balance pickle. So those are my, my asks, kind of, they're much, they're not about any of the specific things, they're just going to generally about how I'd like to see the information package. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody else have any general comments? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Councilmember Hall, a very, very general comment. Well, I guess first, just to say I haven't heard anything I disagree with here, largely supportive of this list. As Deputy Council President Ray said, I am interested in the consequences of this funding and what this means long term. So I think that's information I'd like back as well. All right, now to my very general comment. The memo that we got with regard to the downtown streetery debrief as a part of the agenda packet, I thought was fascinating. In particular, the travel behavior changes that happened as a result of the streetery. So my ask is only that we continue to collect that data. I'm in a more long-term way, I'm interested more in what the consequences are, you know, immediate consequences and long-term consequences of that. You know, we saw traffic volumes pick up on kind of other streets. Did we see an increase in collisions along those roads? Did we see any delays and bus routes along those roads? These are the things that are going through my head right now. So just an ask that we continue to collect that data as well.
Okay, Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. I was a little hesitant to bring up the traffic study as well, but I will plus one Councilmember Hall's comments. And I used to live on Dogwood and I happened to notice that Dogwood apparently was very impacted by the traffic being diverted. So again, when we get a little bit more information and I'd like to see the impact there, it was about the backup on Dogwood. And having lived on that street, I know that it would be, that's a, you get much of a backup there and that's a difficult situation for everybody, pedestrians and cars alike. So a little bit more information about that would be very appreciated. And overall, I think it's, I think it's a very thoughtful package. I appreciate the work that went into it. I think we've identified the additional information that we need. But overall, I'm, I'm supportive of, of the package, the, as we've seen it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I will do one more prompt type question. So Council Deputy President Ray prioritized, and I wonder if any other council members wanted to suggest a different prioritization because I do believe, and the city administrator can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that that would also be helpful for the city administration to have a sense on the prioritization of the requests. Okay, this is Council President Hunt. I will say that in my prioritization, I think vaccinations is the first priority, as I said earlier. And I think emergency shelter is the second priority because of the emergency nature of the ask that is being requested. And then business grants and the fitness. So I, I think I agreed with Council Deputy President Ray, but also just wanted to give that information. And I am not seeing, if anybody else has additional information or comments, if not, I will also try to summarize. Okay, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I just wanted to clarify, when I was talking about priorities and business grants, I was looking at that, that topic that we were talking about. So I, you know, I agree that the vaccinations is, of course, the top priority. And emergency measures, including business grants, would be next. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So I am not seeing any other general comments, so I'm going to make some, I took some notes, so I'm going to try to summarize back the direction and then I'll check in with the city administrator if he has the direction he needs, or if there's additional questions that you would like council to discuss or additional input from council. So on the parks piece, we did, there were some concerns about safety and more information about how this plan could be implemented safely. There was also raised around making sure that it's accessible to the people who, who, who would access this and also equity concerns that were raised and how this would be an equitable distribution of the playgrounds equipment that would be installed under this plan. So I think more information on both of those, but generally supportive, although also recognizing that in the list compared to other things like vaccinations, this would be the lower priority. In terms of the, the Human Services asked first on the emergency shelter, a lot of questions about, a lot of questions around more information about what actually this would cover, how many people it would serve. And then also how long it would, how long we would expect this funding to last, whether it would cover rental assistance, if not, interest in exploring rental assistance from, from several of us. And also, I think, so some interest in looking to expand in this area if needed, but also more information about the need itself would be requested by council. And then I think the next one was the Business Assistance Grants and under that one, recognizing the need, but interested in considering different ways of approaching this grant giving process, such as considering brick and mortar or the needs of the different business types and different ways of administering those grants. And I think more information. And then on the vaccines, strong support, recognition that if we don't do this, nobody else will. Also, thank you very much for the partnership and lots of appreciation for the partnership with Eastside Fire Rescue. And then lastly, interest in continuing the travel study that was done with the streetery and appreciation for the streetery, but also wanting to keep getting that data. So I think that summarizes my notes on council's direction and discussion on these items. And if I missed anything or misstated anything, please let me know. Please comment in the chat and I'll call on you to correct me. Okay, I don't see anything. So City Administrator Bob Quitz, do you have what you need in terms of direction?
Yes, Council President, thank you. Thank you for taking that moment to summarize the comments of your colleagues. Appreciate the thoughtful discussion this evening. We will get back to work, continue to move forward with this. We'll come back to the council at your meeting on Tuesday, February 16th with items for action. We will, I think, get started immediately with the vaccination issues and talk with Eastside Fire and Rescue. If there's a need to bring any additional documents before the council, that we will. But I think I echo the Council President's comments that that really is the priority on the vaccines. We want to continue to move forward there. So thank you to you and the council for the discussion this evening. And thanks to Mayor Polly for her leadership on this. I think the vaccination partnership really has become a model, certainly in King County. I don't know of another community that has brought together stakeholders like she has with this. So thank her for her leadership.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for the presentations as well. And I think, I think I don't see any other comments in the chat or any other last minute questions. So the last item of business this evening is Good of the Order and I, it is noticed on our agenda. So if any council member has anything for Good of the Order, I will, I see that Councilmember Ray has a comment.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. Just very quickly, I think we all know we have a council retreat this weekend and we're going to be doing some online collaboration with a fun tool called Miro. You should have gotten an invitation from the city clerk. So let, let the clerk know if you haven't got it and you can't get in. And if you would like to take it for a test drive and would like a, a co-pilot, I would be happy to set up some time with you and we can, we can get familiar with it before we are on for real on Saturday. So just let me know if you'd like to do that and one would work for you.
Thank you, Council Deputy President Ray. Does any other council member have anything for Good of the Order? I am not seeing any. So with that, there being no further business. This meeting is adjourned at 8:50 PM and thank you all.